Good. This is the Committee on Advancement and External Affairs, and I want to call it to order. First thing, I wanted to just give a few remarks about where we are, all right? What we've decided, and I think we may have mentioned it at the last meeting, was that we're going to do a review again of the guidelines, the standards, the naming rights, only because things have evolved so much that we want to make sure that we are and other events, and so that we want to make sure that we're on target. We know that this is not going to be a short process. We've had, you know, and there are other things that have come up as part of our discussions that we need to put attention on, so that it's a good time to, even though the naming rights are only about three years old, but it's a good time to, to start reviewing some of those. So we're also, and all of the documents I'm talking about is foundation guidelines, naming policies, and there was one more, one more item. And the general, we're working closely with the General Counsel and with, with Senior Vice President Glender, Chancellor, all those great titles we have here. Glenda Grace and, and John Gallo on this, right? So we're working on that as, as a group. And we're also looking at, John Gallo is looking at developing a strategic plan for, good shot, Michael. John Gallo is looking at creating a strategic plan for advancement. And we're looking at reviewing that strategic plan also and having some annual fundraising guidelines and goals for, for, that are included in that strategic plan, or that will come out of that strategic plan, actually. And also for some plans for technical assistance and training for all regarding advancement. We will also be looking at working very closely with the same team to look at external affairs and into government to determine how we can best support these functions moving forward. Any questions? Comments? No, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's on board about everything that we've discussed. Now, we're going to take up the following items on the agenda for approval. Action Item 1A is the approval of the minutes of March 6, 2023. I move the approval of this action. I mean, I move, yeah. And does anybody want a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on this item? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Nope, hearing none. We, yes, we'll now address the action item of the Policy Council, a policy calendar. The Policy Item 1B1. Point 1 is a resolution to approve the naming of the Solomon Blum, Professor of Ancient History at Hunter College. I now call on Vice Chancellor James Gallo to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The first resolution is the naming of the Solomon Blum Professor of Ancient History at Hunter College. Dr. Blum was a professor in Hunter College's School of Education for 30 years. His granddaughter, Lois Stainman, and her husband, Arthur, have made a generous gift of $2 million to the Hunter College Foundation to establish an endowment to fund a professorship of ancient history at Hunter College. This gift builds on a prior gift from the family. Hunter College enthusiastically supports the naming of this professorship.
Thank you for that. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Michael. Any discussion on this item?
Does this meet any of our fundamental gifting requirements?
It, it does meet our naming guidelines, yes.
As a Greek guy, I'm very happy with ancient history, so.
So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? Hearing none, this item is approved. Policy Item 1B2 is a resolution to approve the naming of the Isabel Kudi, Class of 48 Endowment Scholarship at Hunter College. I call on Vice Chancellor Gallo to provide further background on this.
Isabel Kudi is a 1948 alumna of Hunter College. The Isabel Kudi Trust has made a gift of $400,000 to create an endowed scholarship in Isabel's name. The gift will be matched by a 25% match, or $100,000, from strategic funds. The gift will be allocated $5,000 per recipient, which means, on average, four to five students each year will benefit from this endowed scholarship. It meets our minimum naming guidelines, and Hunter enthusiastically recommends this naming. Thank you.
Travis, I approve this, to move this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or oppositions? No? Great, thank you. This item is moved. Policy Item 1B3 is the resolution to approve the naming of the Larry Silverstein Chair of Jewish Studies at Hunter College.
Clara Silverstein is a 1954 alumna of Hunter College, as well as 1956, with a master's degree. She and her husband Larry have contributed $2 million to the Hunter College Foundation to support the Chair of Jewish Studies and Director of the Jewish Studies Program and Center at Hunter College. The Silverstein's have been very generous supporters of Hunter College, having contributed over $10 million to the Hunter College Foundation. Hunter College enthusiastically recommends this naming.
Wonderful. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right. Any discussion? Then we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, this item is approved. Policy Item 1B4 is a resolution to approve the naming of the Ruth Stanton Chair of Art and History at Hunter College.
Ruth Stanton was a well-known art collector and philanthropist and supporter of the Department of Art and Art History at Hunter College. The Ruth Stanton Foundation has contributed just over $2 million to the Hunter College Foundation to establish an endowment to support salary and research expenditures for the Ruth Stanton Chair of Art and Art History. This gift meets our minimum naming guidelines and standards, and Hunter College enthusiastically recommends it.
Could you just, for the record, what's the amount?
$2,500,000.
Okay. Thank you. I approve the, this Policy Item 1B4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, this item is approved. I just want to go for the record, is that this has been a record year of fundraising. I know that City College has also had a record year. But it's been a record year of fundraising for Hunter College, and so I want to acknowledge Hunter College, its foundation and the president. Thank you for those efforts. Now, we're going to go to the Policy Item 1B5. Is a resolution to approve the naming of the Coco de Phillips Family Scholarship at Ogenio Maria de Ostos Community College. I now call on Vice Chancellor Gallo to provide some background.
While all the gifts have been extremely meaningful and generous, it gives me great joy and pleasure to introduce this resolution for the Coco de Felipe's Family Scholarship Endowment at Ostos Community College. It is being made by the president of Ostos College, as well as her family. It is an endowed scholarship of $50,000 to support students. The scholarship will help to free the cost of tuition fees and other expenses for students at the college. It meets our minimum naming standards, and it is also eligible for our match of 25%, or $12,500. $12,500 in this case.
For a total of 62?
Correct.
Wonderful.
For a total of 62,500. And yeah, and I just want to publicly say thank you to the president and her family for this very generous gift.
Yeah. Is this the first of its kind, where a president creates an endowment?
This is one of the first. I believe President Christine Mangino made a gift for a physical naming at Queensborough, but this may be the first endowed scholarship.
Wonderful. I, I move the approval of Policy Item 1B5. Do I have a second?
Enthusiastically second.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? This is fabulously approved. So congratulations. With no more items on the policy calendar, I move to the informational items on the agenda. Item 3A is a report by Senior Vice Chancellor. I got to write that, Glenda, Glenda Grace.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. It's hard to follow after, well, no, it's exciting to follow after so many people have given so much to the, to the university and to the colleges. It's really exciting. Right now, we're going to talk a little bit about what the state and the city, some of what the state has given and some of what we're expecting. So I wanted to address a finding that actually happened, which was announced during the Somos Conference in March of 2023 by the governor, new funding for Centro and the Center for Dominican Studies Institute. Both received 1.5 million each from the state to support ongoing operations and initiatives at their incredibly important centers that preserve the rich culture and history of Puerto Ricans and Dominicans everywhere. The allocation was announced by the governor at the governor's reception at Somos, and she talked about the diversity being the strength of New York and really recognizing the importance of Latino New Yorkers and what they've done, and how she was happy to support the institutes at Hunter College and City College for the amazing work that they do. And we heard also from the directors, who are just excited about getting more funds to do the great work that they do. At Centro, the funding allowing them to preserve, digitize, and make archival collections more accessible, while also expanding research initiatives and art and culture programs. At the Dominican Studies Institute, they just made it very clear that the research that they do to learn from the past helps what happens in the present, and it helps them take pride in the contributions that we've made and to encourage younger generations to go beyond and be kinder. And we're very thankful for the governor for making these announcements, and we look forward to other announcements supporting the great work that's being done at different centers at, at CUNY. Now, I'm going to talk about something that's not at all in the news, city and state budget timelines and themes. Joking, that's all what we're talking about. I just want to give an overview of where we stand on timelines. As you know, normally, the state budget, the governor announces the executive budget in mid-January, early February. March, you get the one-house bills. April 1st is usually when the enacted budget has happened. It did not, it hasn't happened yet. In fact, there have been extenders that have kept the government afloat, and we're hoping every day, we know that good news is coming, that the budget will be enacted shortly. With the city, we know that in January, you get the preliminary plan. We are expecting the April, on April 26, the mayor's executive budget, and then the adopted budget happens in June. And then there are different times of the year where changes can occur with the city's budget. We just wanted to talk a bit about what the themes have been when we've been talking and talking to our funding partners, to elected officials and others who have influence on what the budgets look like. And we stress how diverse CUNY's student body is. And we also stress what we hear about and we live with every day, how we're an engine of social mobility and how we impact families as well as communities. So it's just not our students, but the communities that they live in, and that CUNY is key to a strong economy. We've also talked a lot about the idea that one of the things that we're facing is a structural deficit. At senior colleges, this deficit is due to two things, decreases in enrollment and also related tuition revenue, and also unfunded mandatory costs increases that we've had to self-fund. And at community colleges, enrollment has also declined, and budget cuts have impacted. And also, one of the things that we've been talking about is asking that we continue the traditional funding split between SUNY and CUNY, 40% CUNY usually gets and 60% SUNY usually gets. So that's some of the things that we've been stressing to everyone as we talk to our partners. With the state lobbying update. We've done numerous calls, meetings, and other outreach with elected officials and their staff, as well as Senate and Assembly offices. This has been ongoing since, well, actually, since before the budget was released. And we're still doing it, because we're going to do it until the budget is enacted, and then we'll start from scratch again. It's done by folks in Centro and the presidents, and different people on, at our colleges are asked to do the same thing. Again, it's done by the chancellor, members of the chancellery, Albany staff, presidents, deans, external relations staff, as well as other members of the university, the student senate members, and also the PSC. There's a lot of folks out there telling the good story about CUNY.
And the few trustees.
Ah, yes, and also the trustees. That's another slide that I mistakenly deleted. No, obviously, you tell the great story, because you know the work that we do, and we appreciate all of the work that you do also.
My understanding is the higher education piece of the budget is all but done. We have the criminal justice piece, which affects some of our grants and some of our allocations, but that's really the only outstanding piece? Is that correct, or?
Well, my understanding is it's coming close. Every now and again, I check my phone for texts often, because we keep hearing different things.
Nothing gets done at Albany till everything gets done.
That's right. And we, the chancellor and I were on the phone with a couple of folks last week, and hopefully, it'll get done quickly. And not just quickly, but effectively, because we have an amazing mission that needs to be fulfilled. And in order to do that, we have to get the funding we need. And one of the things we also do is we host, I think, two of the best lunches at the caucus and also at Somos. Pretty amazing lunch, lunches, and the support that the elected shells. Oh, yeah, no, amazing. They do, we, it's, it's a wonderful, oh, yeah, the lunch, yes, it's amazing. But the brownies are, the brownies are very good, but really, the speakers who come to show their support for CUNY is unbelievable. It really shows how much they appreciate us. And we always showcase our students and student interns at those lunches. So that really helps, I think, in the work that we do. And all colleges actually host legislative breakfasts in each borough. So by borough, there are different legislative breakfasts. Some of them have been by Zoom recently, but some returned in person this year. And I'm just showing you something that is next in a couple of days doesn't, it's, it's just what, what happened. The executive budget was put out, and then each, the Assembly and the Senate put out their one-house bills. And this just gives you a comparison of the different funding. The executive total enacted for us, about 30 million. And the Assembly, almost 800 million. The Senate recommended over 500 million. And some good news for us is some of the funding that was given last year, $40 million for one-time strategic funds, was actually based lined into the general operating support for this coming year, and that's pretty amazing. And both of the Assembly and Senate bills also included this $40 million. The trustees actually approved the plan of what we were going to do with those funds this past year. So that's a big victory for us and very, very helpful. Any questions before I move on, because?
I have two questions on what you've presented so far. The first one was that you talked about unfunded mandates, all right? And, and the cost of that. Do you have any examples of some of those unfunded mandates that, that we are executing now and implementing that are, are cost prohibitive for us?
Well, part of the issues that-
Close to being cost prohibitive.
Well, one is that we're not, contract costs aren't covered, so when they're, when they're-
Our labor costs?
Yes, our labor costs are not. That's one very big example, because every year, when their people get step increases, we have to cover that. And that's gone back for a while.
Yeah. Okay.
And I can give you more. I can also make sure.
Right, it'll be helpful for us to know what some of those unfunded mandates are, particularly as we're looking at budget, right?
Okay.
Chancellor.
If it's, if it's helpful, on, on my campus, the unfunded contractual increases, not even just the step increases, accounts for $7 million of our, of our budget deficit. And you'll see that across all the campuses, that same kind of increment, roughly about two or three-
You're talking about the labor relations costs?
The labor, the, the new PSC contract, right?
Right, right, right. But do you have any examples of other unfunded mandates that?
You know, some, some of them are minor, so I wouldn't say that it's cost prohibitive. But for instance, we were already doing food pantries on our campus, but, but that was a mandate that everyone had to have a food pantry. Other kind of smaller programmatic stuff. By far, the lion's share is, is labor contracts and step increases. Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you for that.
There's also French candidates.
Right. Yeah, I think of that as the part of the caucus. The other question was, this budget, this budget page, is that 30 million more versus, or is that what, what?
Above, above the enacted, yeah, it's a 30 million addition.
Above the enacted?
Yes.
So the other, and that's 762 million that they're also recommending?
Yeah, the Assembly recommends.
So we hope that it's somewhere between that number and the 30 million? Is that, is that the anticipation? Okay, great. Do we have, in all of these conversations, Phyllis, this is a tough question, but we have-
Thank you.
Do we have, are we closer to the 30, or to the seven, or to the 10? Do you have any, any, any sense of, you know, just of where this is moving?
I, it's always tough to tell, right, in terms of, trustee, I would say it's not over until it's, it's really over.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think that there's a clear understanding about the structural component of our deficit, which is different from, let's say, a conversation in which we're coming out of a bad budget year, right? That this is something slightly different and, and merits a lot more attention. I mean, I think a good first sign, you know, even though I think we would have liked many, some of the funding elements that were provided for SUNY, right, that we didn't get. But for example, the 40 million that the governor converted into baseline, right? That's highly unusual in past practice, right? So that indicates a willingness to recognize that we have some of this operating ongoing cost, and they need to baseline that. So we, we like to think that that is a good overall signal, you know, coming from, from, from the executive. And, and I think higher ed has been getting a lot more attention than, than it has in the four years that I've been chancellor, right? So I only have that window in terms of what we've been doing. I mean, I am getting texts from folks that I cannot name, right, in terms of different things that are occurring. And, and, and so I think that we are going to do better than, than the baseline in, in, in the executive. And also, good conversations with the budget director. You know, so it's, it's, I, I feel optimistic, but, you know.
That you will be upwards of the 30 million.
And, and, well, I mean, that, that, that's for sure, but, but that, that the message has, has, you know, we had, and I want to make sure that we give credit to all the folks that, I mean, it's not just, you know, the presidents and the deans who are out there knocking on, you know, all the doors, and the members of the, of the chancellor, you know. We had this meeting, our labor meeting with our colleagues in the PSC. You know, we have two every quarter. And the beginning of the conversation, we're talking about strategy and what, what they're hearing or what we're hearing. You know, there's a lot of alignment in, in, in some of the things that we're talking about. I found that positive. I was, prior to our committee meeting, I was having a conversation with our student trustee, and we were talking about their own efforts and advocacy from the side of the, of the students too. So, I mean, clearly, all hands on deck. And, and for whatever it's worth, the engagement and, and, and of all the different players that are part of the budget sausage-making, in the four years I've been chancellor, this is a year which I felt a lot more of that. We'll see what it means at the end of the day in terms of dollars, right? Stay tuned, but, so that's my best attempt at, at the answering your-
At the, at the, at the, what is it, the glass ball?
Yes.
I, I'd just like to say that the new chair of the Assembly Higher Ed Committee, Pat Fahy, has said, this should be the year of higher education. She's said that a number of times. So we're hopeful that means that we're well, yeah, third up.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. The other thing that was, I, I was struck by, and then you mentioned it again, Chancellor, the mayor's strong statement to students at the Black and Latino Caucus luncheon, which, you know, like strut when you say you're from CUNY. It's hard to strut without sneakers. So, but it was just, it was a great, great, you know, powerful, and again, another endorsement that this might be the year for higher ed, so that's hopeful.
And, and the team has also been, I mean, you know, we, we're more focused on Albany now, because for all the obvious reasons, but we've also been engaging with the mayor, with the city's budget director, and, and in those conversations, really good meeting also with Speaker Adams and with the chair of the Higher Ed Committee to the roundtable, so, you know.
Yeah, because they proposed a budget that was a little different.
Yes, and that's, so one, next steps, we're going to continue. We're still talking to people. We won't, it won't end in realistically. As soon as it does end, we'll start talking about for next year, because our needs are ongoing. So city's lobbying update, a little different. We, we're dealing with, just like so many other state-funded, city-funded entities, we're dealing with pegs. The governor, the mayor's app announced a number of pegs, and at this point, the peg that we're looking for in FY 2024 could grow to $61 million. And it's actually, it's programmed to end the gap with the pegs. So it's just, it cuts ongoing, that can happen after the budget's announced. That's what we're facing. The mayor put out the preliminary budget, and the item's not funded. They're here for you. There are a couple of accelerate, complete, engage, which is a program that helps people finish faster. The CUNY Inclusive Economy's not there. There's a Brooklyn Recovery Corps wasn't there. And also, there's some, a number of highlights for the city, things that were funded by the city council that were not included in the preliminary budget. We do the same thing, lots of phone calls, meetings, outreach to council members and their staff. We have a number of people downtown every single day, just making sure that they talk to folks, folks in our city relations office who are down there talking regularly, to make sure that people understand, not only understand, because I do think, as you said, the mayor understands how important it is. But in the, in the challenge of juggling all of the different needs that the city is facing, we want to make sure that people recognize that our needs have, need to be met with, with money. And we are focusing on helping have different, different events that highlights the impacts of the pegs on our operations and our mission, so that the vacancies that some people are dealing with, they're not just vacancies for us, they deal with programmatic issues, and we want to make sure that folks understand that and how these pegs might impact us differently. There was a response that the city council did. It's, their response is a little different than the one-house bills. And in the city council response, they recommended a number of things that were not funded in the preliminary budget to be funded. And so a couple of things, including the ACE, which I mentioned, that, that some number for the peg is restored, and that they're actually, they're actually asking that there's more full-time advisors hired. And actually, that's a specific proposal that was put forward by the PSC. What are the next steps? The expectation is that the mayor's executive budget will come out on the 26th. It may be the 25th, it might be the 27th. The last we heard when we gave this was the 26th. And then, we're going to have a budget, there are going to be budget hearings. And right now, the budget hearing for, for CUNY is anticipated, the early- the early second, second week in May, where the chancellor will go testify about the impact of the budget. That will be announced on CUNY and will continue to lobby. There'll be continued conversations. And again, the trustees will lobby also, as I know, but we'll all be out there trying to make sure that we get the funds that CUNY needs to, to be, provide all the services that we need to normally provide. The pandemic, while it may not be over, it's certainly changing, and we know that CUNY has to be in the mix. And in the mix in a strong way to help the city recover and to help our students and their families get to the next level. So that's where we stand. Any questions, comments, ideas?
No, I only had one more. Did your peg include a headcount reduction? In addition, all right.
Yeah, I think the last one looked at vacancies, yes.
Yeah, the current one.
Yeah.
The last peg, yeah.
The last, no, no, the last peg did. This peg, they're asking.
Oh, the, the one of the, the latest round of the, of the three percent? They, they left it open.
They left that open, right? Okay, I thought so. It sounded like you were. And then the other, the other thing on, well, there's nothing else to say about pegs. The, the only other thing I was going to say was, the accelerator program is, it has been removed?
It wasn't, it wasn't funded in the preliminary budget. We'll see, we'll see what, what happens, obviously, with the conversation.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's an important. All right, thank you. Any other, any other comments? Vice Chancellor, Senior Vice Chancellor, Glenn DeGrace, and anyone else who works on this committee?
Just use this as a resource, you know, we all have especially borough-based contacts and.
Absolutely, we will. And I'm actually very excited this year to be working with the new vice chancellor for Government Affairs, Jeff Fodas, who.
So I'll assume he's upstate.
We'll let you assume that. But look, obviously, he's been off quite a bit.
On this close location, doing, doing the Lord's work.
Doing the Lord's work.
Right. And, and to chair and chancellor and vice chancellor, of course, what you're saying to all of us is that our voices still need to be heard. And, and as you have done, and, and the support of this board is to continue because nothing, I believe, for, at this point, for the city, as it said, is, is higher ed and education.
Absolutely. And look, I, we talk about this during this season, but obviously, we're ambassadors all year long. One of the things that the chancellor's always done, he's always remembered, people don't have to DC between January and June. In fact, they're really busy.
No, that's when everybody else is there.
And so we, we want to make sure that we're talking about our budgets and our needs in August and in September and October and November because that's when people have more time. And it's easier for them to actually remember something during that time as opposed to when you're coming to talk to them in, in February. So we appreciate the work you do year-round. It's helpful. It, it makes a difference.
Yeah, and there's nothing like a visit in the district office with the students that live in their community.
Yep.
Right?
Absolutely.
Nothing more important than that, or just as important.
Right. And our chair is, talked to Chair Thompson, who's also doing the Lord's work, and also supporting and making sure, as we all are, to support what we, what we need here. And any recommendations would be appreciated and well-received, of course.
Yeah, and very specific talking points are also very essential.
Okay, excellent.
So that we don't talk in generics, but like the accelerator program.
Okay, we'll make sure, we'll make sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. I, I really want to say that we're looking forward to this review and enhancement of all of our policies and standards. So anything, anything, anything else? Mike, are you going to report on anything? Nope?
Just, we're going to have, James Gao is going to introduce the president to talk about some of the gifts.
Okay, great.
We're fortunate to have three of our distinguished colleagues from BMCC, Lehman, and Ostos with us. The presidents are here to share with us how they have utilized seventy-five million dollars in philanthropic funding from the Mackenzie Scott Gifts. Madam Chair, may I invite them to the table, please? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, pardon. Is he asking you a question? Yes, please join us.
They need your blessing. They need your blessing so I can come.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
The presidents have been invited to give a very brief report. A brief report on how they've utilized the funding. We'll go in alphabetical order to make things fair and start with President Tony Monroe from BMCC.
Good afternoon, good evening. It is such an honor and pleasure to be here today. Thank you for the invitation to the CUNY Board of Trustees Advancement and External Relations Committee. Madam Chair, thank you. Chancellor, thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an overview of Mackenzie Scott's unprecedented investment in our work. Thanks to the thirty million dollar unrestricted gift from Ms. Mackenzie Scott in the fall of twenty twenty, BMCC launched the President's Fund for Excellence and Innovation, PFEI, for the benefit of BMCC and its students. The PFEI purpose and strategic priorities are to identify, build, and implement creative, effective approaches that advance campus-wide initiatives for equity and inclusion, economic mobility, knowledge creation, and retention, and, and student success. Through PFEI, we are intent on addressing the systemic inequities experienced by our students and evident throughout their communities. Ms. Scott's investment in our work has inspired and engendered the trust of other foundations and individuals to partner with us to scale up what works and build on those successes. The Scott Gift Funds were financially invested equally in the CUNY Fund and the Borough of Manhattan Community College Foundation. PFEI investments are guided by principles of socially responsible and sustainable investing consistent with the interests of our students, aligned with BMC's goals to advance diversity and inclusion in communities and workplaces in the U.S. and globally. And as stewards, our intent has been to ensure the availability of resources for future generations of students while maximizing our flexibility and the impact of the funds we elect to utilize each year. PFEI, PFEI has been organized to optimize involvement of BMCC community. It assures participation amplifies the committed and informed voices of our BMCC community who know best how to navigate and address the challenges faced by our students. Diverse teams of faculty, staff, and students come together to identify, recommend, and review the ideas brought forward for consideration from the BMCC community. The Proposal Review Committee is made up of volunteer members from the campus community, college council representatives, and the SGA. The Steering Committee is chaired by the BMCC president and makes the final selection of funded programs and projects. There is also a comprehensive pre- and post-selection support team. The organizational structure of PFEI was established to provide the structure, training, technical support, guidance, and project management support to develop programs and initiatives to quantifiably enhance BMCC's success. We are using what we have learned in the process of round one to improve how we work and support programs in round two. To provide you with an overview of round one programs and projects, investments, we focused three focus areas. We included three focus areas: teaching and curriculum initiatives, innovative programs, transformational student support. Sixty-one letters of intent were submitted, and thirty-one proposals were invited for further review. Seventeen projects funded for a two-year period for approximately one million dollars. These projects are in, in final review process as their project investment period formally ends June thirtieth of this year. These selected teams have been working collaboratively and as symmetrical partners to achieve the greatest and deepest impact across aligned mission and service areas of BMCC, PFEI, and the powerful investment of Ms. Scott. They are the Public Health Academy, Business Urban Male Leadership Academy, also known as B UMLA, Gaining Academic Insight in New Strategies, the Virtual Campus, Social Justice and Equity Center, Anti-Racist Pedagogy Summer Workshop, and Faculty-Student Fellowship, and Black Studies Across the Americas. The B UMLA and UMLA represent two highly successful components of BMC's Black Male Initiative Program and are two of our cohort programs. B UMLA funding through PFEI has afforded us the opportunity to commit the resources and expertise to significantly improve the student outcome of Black and Hispanic men. I am proud to say that for the first time ever, the retention rates for our entering Black men drove institutional retention rates higher in fall of twenty twenty-two. BMCC's Public Health Academy is another example of the transformative outcomes that can be accomplished with the right investments and utilization of resources. This PFEI initiative incorporated retention and student success data gathered over the past five years as well as the BMCC Leadership Academy into the Health Education Program. We know that our students perform best when there is a clear pathway with needed supports. Through the investments, work, research, and assessments made possible through the funded programs of PFEI, and with all that is possible through new partnerships and leveraged investments, we are confident that our students will be even more successful as their paths are cleared, directed, and free from unnecessary barriers.
Thank you. Next.
President Eifelipis.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you for the invitation, Madam Chair and, and Chancellor, and some wonderful people right in front of me as well. Everyone, good to see you. What we did, we didn't receive thirty million. We received fifteen. All right. So let's just say I'm the poor relative here. So what we, what we did was, very simply, even though it was at the president's discretion, I don't believe in that. I mean, we formed what we call the Ostos Advisory Corp., like the Peace Corps, except, and it includes student leadership, faculty leadership, administrators, staff from throughout the, throughout the college. It's about twenty members, including myself. I chair that. I chair that committee. And what we do is, first, we had sort of a, I had some ideas of my own, which I proposed, and then we ultimately created eight initiatives that have separated thirteen million because I believe always that, you know, once I leave, somebody else is going to come and can have even better ideas for Ostos. So those are an endowment for future presidents to use. And we've been using, number one, these two million, plus the fact that we have been doing some other outreach to get additional funds. So we got, one of the initiatives was funded by a million-dollar earmark. Congressman Richie Torres has been really good, and we are now have another million waiting to, to be acted on next year to support another one of the initiatives. Columbia University as well, for that two-plus-two-plus-two program in public health. They will provide, we will provide support for the students, or there are Ostos, and then they will provide support for the students, which, you know, the tuition there is high, so that that number can grow. So I tell you what they were, these initiatives. And I, I think right now about four hundred students have been directly impacted, plus a lot of faculty research. So Families United in Education. And so it's amazing because we've gotten this little group, there's about twenty-five of them every semester, and they are anyone who's related, like a cousin or extended, we're Latinos, so for the most part, and extended family counts. And, and so they, they support each other and they get scholarships if they maintain certain GPA. They also get to go to see a Broadway show, which is a big thing, you know, for them, and, and, and to have lunch and, and metro cars and things like that, and presentations. I have a lot of celebrations, small celebrations for the students' achievements. So that is, the mentoring and teach jobs on campus has been outstanding because it's following the, the work-study model, except that they are assigned to a different, to different areas of their interest in their field. And this is sort of like having a locos parentis, a parent there who's going to check, did you do your homework? When is your midterm? That works, believe me. Brings a cake when there's a birthday to the office. And the student gets ten, ten hours a week, twenty dollars an hour to do this work. We just had, last year, we had a student who was working with the office, in the business office, and the student graduated in September, and they hire her because she was so effective as she continues to work. So it's creating opportunity. We have the Ostos Research Center. The chancellor just joined us. We were happy to see him there. And the faculty have been, even without the center, have been working as research mentors with students. There's about seventeen students each semester that is engaging in, in research. And I want a part of it to be advocacy for the community, but a lot of it also is in the, in the natural sciences. We have several NSF grants. The institution and the faculty are terrific. They're so great to work with the students. I told you about the Ostos mentoring and supporting students at two-plus-two-plus-two. So this earmark that we got to support some of that, students are going to three different places with that. Queens College, that's my alma mater, they're going to do arts administration there. And we have a beautiful articulation that begins September. They have been great to work with. City College, we have work, where is he?
Over here.
Over here. We have worked really well with them when I was a provost with the engineering programs, and that's to continue support with the engineering programs as well. And then, of course, Columbia University. I have worked with them because of the Serrano program, back then, we were training for public service. And this is for the public health. And they have come, they have given a series, besides that, all of those doctors, giving a series of lectures about how do you deal with children, with the aging, with, during COVID, there were wonderful conversations as well. We have the external internships. In the summer, we work with community organizations. I know the chancellor said, he's a patron saint of paid internships. So we, from the grant, pay the internship, and they go to work with the community organizations to learn and to support them as well. And that has been, and then, of course, every semester, we put money in the bridge tuition support assistance fund to help students with that. And we have a workforce initiative. I'm really encouraging for the non-credit side of the house to hold hands with the credit side. We already have about nine programs that have a bridge to transfer from non-credit to credit. When they do, I invite them in. If they finish the semester really doing well, that transition from non-credit to credit, they get a scholarship and encourage them to continue. So basically, those are the ones we do, we do every, at the end of every year, and I received this money. It was, they called me to tell me that we had received it. It was June twenty-one, and we received the money August twenty-one. So I'm finishing the second year. And so we will do a survey again of the team and the college community to see which are the initiatives that they would like to continue, and we will continue to run them that way. We're spending maybe seven hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, seven hundred, depending, on the year. And so we squeeze every nickel. We squeeze every nickel to make it continue to happen. And we try to raise funds somewhere else to support it. So those thirteen million, it's a lucky thirteen, you know that. Lucky thirteen will continue for many years to come. So I'm happy, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. You're the best.
President Delgado, you're up.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor. So we did receive thirty million dollars prior to my arrival.
You noticed this, right?
Apparently, there was a discussion amongst Alina leadership led by interim. Apparently, there was a discussion amongst the Lehman leadership led by interim President Lemons to give some to Ostos, but the final decision was made to keep it all at Lehman. I kinda supported that once I came in.
I took advice from him, too.
So a decision was made between, amongst the Cabinet about how to use the money initially, and about 10% was set aside for one-time activities, and I'll get to those in a second. The remaining 27-odd million was set aside. We have not yet transferred it to the foundation. We had to, with Derek's help and other people's help, we had to do some cleanup with our foundation. And I think we have done that, at least I was reported yesterday, we finally got an MOU in place. So we'll be back to this body to, to move the bulk of the endowment in, into the, into the foundation. One of the things that did occur, though, is, is as the Cabinet was divvying up the money, there was a focus on programmatic activities, and, and even with the endowment money, short-term impact, because we were in the middle of COVID. And so a fair amount of money was set aside for emergency loans. A fair, a fair amount of money was invested into things like our food pantry. Some money was invested into our IT infrastructure, because our students, once they were froze out of campus, the IT infrastructure in the Bronx is perhaps less than what it would be in Manhattan. But that gave me some time when I came in the summer of 2021 to talk to the campus and reassess where we were at. And what I realized is, of the 27-odd million that was gonna go to endowment, about, about 10% was set aside for scholarships. And we rejiggered what we were gonna focus on, and so, $10 million now. So roughly a third of the total is set aside directly for student scholarships. Those are designed as access scholarships, and it has allowed us to create the Mackenzie Scott Scholars on the front end to help recruitment. It has allowed us to then turn to the Lehman family and talk about the Lehman scholarships as success scholarships, as high-impact practice scholarships. What do you do once you're here? What kind of experiences do you have? With the 10% that we had set aside for one time, we did things like do a comprehensive climate survey, which is got done after a year of work with the Rank and Associates Group. It has now given us a list of things to work on on campus. Some of low-hanging fruit, some are a little bit higher. It'll take a minute to get to them. We were able to contract with Community Consulting Services, so they're in their second year with us. CCS has done a comprehensive evaluation of what our foundation operation looks like, what our advancement operation looks like, and our capacity to fundraise. So we are now leveraging the Mackenzie Scott Gift into an additional $70 million to get to about $100 to $125 million comprehensive campaign that hopefully will finish within five years. It may take seven years. But, but our goal is to get to an endowment north of $100 billion when we're done. In addition to that, much like the rest of CUNY, and certainly with the encouragement of our, of our Chancellor, a lot of money has been focused, one-time money has been focused on recurring contracts with entities to help us with that transition to work. So Brayden has been one of those entities. Robin Hood has been there. There have been some purchases in software as well. The intention of all of these programs is to try to mix and match and see which ones work with our students in different schools, to make sure that they are networked, prepared, and capable to take advantage of their undergraduate and, and graduate degrees once they leave Lehman, and really enter into a career of work, whether it's in New York City or beyond. And I'd say the last piece is, we've held money behind because we do that at Lehman, because we're always concerned about a rainy day. We're in the middle of a rainy day. I'm still adding advancement officers. They're not on tax levying money. They're on RF money, they're on foundation dollars, they're on Scott dollars, which means at, at a crucial time when a bunch of Presidents could come here and say, woe is us. And if you want me to, happy to play that role tonight. That's not why I'm here. I'm still in a place where I'm able to attract talent to our advancement team so that we can move towards that goal. That would not have been possible had it not been for the Mackenzie Scott Gift. Now, in terms of the endowment money, in addition to that 10 million, we've got an additional 16 or so million dollars that are sort of spread across a variety of functions. Some is sort of marketing and outreach, some is discretionary in my office because as we, as we move into the campaign, there are auxiliary costs that are associated with it that we're not quite sure what they're going to be. But the largest sort of other group are things that are spread across the academic units. So it's program innovation, program development, professional development for our faculty. So we've continued to move ahead with creating not just a campus that is full of classrooms that allow us to teach us iFlex, but we've been able to support our own training programs for the faculty to teach in those iFlex modalities. And in addition, prepare the faculty and staff for what comes beyond COVID. And what comes beyond COVID for us are a pivot to more international students because that opportunity is still there now that COVID is abating. And secondly, to those high-impact practices. So we've identified, in addition to career development, or career and internship opportunities, undergraduate research and study abroad for students as two additional high-impact practices that could lead to student success and retention. We had not been able to really deploy those, obviously, when we were shut down. Our STEM faculty were more than happy to come into the labs, but we said, no, 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 no. Here's, here's the message from the mothership. We're not having students just sort of wander in here sort of randomly during the summer to do research, but we're in that space now where we can do that. And all of that is related to the Mackenzie Scott Gift. So where will we be in a year from now? We will have completed most, but not all of our one-time projects. We will still have pockets of recurring money from the takedown that has been unexpensed over the first two years. And we will have a recurring pot of money for programmatic innovation, academic programming, and scholarships that will sustain at a level higher than what the total endowment at Lehman was prior to the gift. So we will have an endowment, when we bring it to you in September, that'll be $35 to $36 million. On paper, when I arrived, when the Chancellor graciously offered me a contract, was about $9.7 million.
Congratulations.
That's transformational in terms of the legacy that you leave for the future generations of the people who lead Lehman, but more importantly, the students who walk through Lehman. The one thing that we have done with our board, and I do wanna say this because there's some noise about it, is we have left it open that we will come back to the board, and as we fundraise for initiatives, the amount of money that we have said is in this pot or that pot for Mackenzie Scott will shift. Because we have initiatives that we're going to fund that are currently funded by Scott endowment dollars. When that happens, my intention is to shift more money into the scholarship pool. Because that will always be a key component of student access and success, certainly with student persistence. And so we've identified four or five of these initiatives. They total about $9 million that are leveraged against the Scott dollars now. If we're doing our job over the next five years and doing fundraising, that's a pot of money that can be swept and put back into the scholarship pot. And we can grow the scholarship pot because we have other endowments for programmatic innovation and development. That's what we're doing with our money.
How many other universities have gotten the Mackenzie Scott? How many words did it total?
No, that's a great number.
Not in New York. I think in New York.
No, 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 no. I, I know there are a lot.
Right now, it's been, it's been, it's been mostly community colleges.
Right.
Or HBCUs also receive.
No, I'm talking about CUNY. CUNY got.
Oh, no.
Three.
Those three.
Yep.
Okay, great.
So far.
So far, right. So you'll make a difference whether we get more.
We're happy to go back and ask for more.
We're happy to.
Happy to.
But you know, at the end of the first year, they, we were supposed to submit a report, which we did. And then we heard about what, and originally, the agreement was that for three years, we were gonna submit reports. At the end of the first year, they wrote to me, and they said, you don't need to submit anymore. So I don't, just the first year, and let them know that I'm watching every nickel. For sure, for our students.
Right. So that gives you another chance to cultivate them.
Yep.
Chance to cultivate more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any comments?
I just wanna thank the Presidents and the Chancellor, you know, and actually you as well. The changing in the philanthropic gifting has been huge, especially during the Chancellor's tenure. From when I first came on, you can see the difference in changing these gifting requirements and then having the Presidents really apply themselves like they have, so I think it's great. Because I don't know if we're getting any more from Albany or City Hall, but this is the one area that's seen some growth since I joined the board.
Yeah, and this, this area gives you a lot more flexibility. I, I just.
And let me thank Ms. Scott.
Right. I acknowledge all of the, those innovative programs, you know, the, I mean, we know we have a patron saint for internships, paid internships, but in addition to a patron saint, you kinda need the money that gets us supported for that. And so it's just, I mean, some of them are just phenomenal. I mean, the study abroad, some of the other family ones, the emergency support, so congratulations to all of you. Thank you, thank you. All right, anything else?
No.
Glenda?
Nope, other than thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We're looking forward to this. So, hearing no other items, this meeting is adjourned.